Page eight, twenty twenty four, please stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item up is to approve the minutes of the village board meeting, regular meeting of December twelfth, twenty twenty three.
Move to approve the minutes of the village board trustees' meeting of December twelfth, twenty twenty three.
Second. Any changes? Call vote?
Uh, sorry, I have a change.
Okay.
Um, on page four, um, uh, the motion A about the, the ordinance levying the taxes, I, I think we're supposed to include the amount in there. The dollar amount.
Okay.
See where, see where that is. On page four.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Paragraph A, so like right, right after twenty twenty three, say, in the aggregate amount of fifteen million, five hundred and seventy, seven thousand, seventy-five dollars.
Yep. Got that?
Got it.
Okay.
So we had to add that.
Chip.
Yeah, before.
Makes sense.
Yep.
Anything else? With that addition, do you have a motion?
I, I already moved.
Okay, alright. Roll call vote?
Trustee Pashma?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
I'm staying.
Trustee Sifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bean?
Next item up is village presidents' report. The final free Christmas tree pickup will take place on the week of January fifteenth. On your regular pickup day, all decorations and trimming must be removed from the tree. Please note, artificial trees require stickers and aren't included in the free pickup service. Citizens petitions, anybody here who wants to speak about a matter on or off the agenda? If you've got something that's on the agenda, I suggest you wait until we take the matter up. Anybody wish to address the village board?
Would you like to hear, um, time is on Sixth Street now?
Sure, now or at the end, whenever, whatever you prefer.
Good evening, everyone. Monica Mossberg, I am a resident of Sixth Street. Um, we would like to read a letter that, uh, the village trustees, the village president, and the village manager received earlier this afternoon in response to the SSA on Sixth Street.
We get to read it, we all got the letter, we all read it.
Uh, did everyone receive the, I think we wanted to, to read it for the, for the, um, other attendees to hear.
I'd rather you not. I mean, we can, you can hand it out, we're happy to make pop copies and hand it out to everybody, but it just seems like a, you know, we've all read it, we're the decision makers.
I think we'd like to proceed with reading it if there's no significant objection. I'll make it quick.
I don't, I don't have a significant objection, I just think it's a waste of time because I read the letter, but if you feel compelled to do it.
Okay, we'll make it, we'll make it quick, I promise.
Sure.
Alright, thank you. Uh, we are receipt of your letter dated December twenty first, twenty twenty three, requesting a response on the creation of an SSA to fund the Sixth Street road replacement cost. While the majority of the residents of the Sixth Street, uh, of Sixth Street are supportive of restoring the original brick street, we do not feel we've been provided sufficient information or enough opportunity for collaboration on the proposed SSA to enable us to even vote, uh, or support this matter. The propose, the proposal generally speaks to a two million dollar estimate, and our understanding is that no bids have been received to date. Until we know the final figure and details on the SSA structuring, we are unable to form an opinion on our commitment. Based on emails with the director of finance, it further appears that there's only a single estimate at this point, not only for the road costs, but also for the associated financing components of this expenditure. We received one option for a ten-year payment plan under the SSA with no additional information on the interest rate or any other associated administrative fees tied to the establishment of the SSA. Further, we have not been provided any information on the all-in cost that include those financing charges. Financing is not a one-size-fits-all scenario, and the fact that the village has made a proposal on payments and financing with no input from impacted homeowners is astonishing and disappointing. We are not willing to commit in any capacity to writing a blank check to the village of Hinsdale. The cost of a, an SSA for Sixth Street residents is not insignificant, with some village homeowners facing an additional expense of well over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The village of Hinsdale has effectively spent no money over the last seventy-plus years in restoring or maintaining Sixth Street. If restored with brick, it is likely that little to no additional money will be spent over the next seventy-plus years on the maintenance of Sixth Street. While the village of Hinsdale has benefited from and would continue to reap the benefits of Sixth Street taxpayers for this infrastructure, you are simultaneously asking us to fund our own street restoration. There are a significant number of studies published that demonstrate the financial benefits of brick streets. While the initial costs may be higher, their longevity far outlasts that of asphalt and are ultimately less expensive over the life cycle of the street. Sadly, none of these points appear to have been researched or even considered by the village prior to making the seemingly unilateral decision as to the future of these brick roads. President Tom Colley is quoted in the Hinsdaleian on December twentieth, twenty twenty three, stating, "Historical preservation is a goal of the village board." While the precedent for support of historical preservation has been established through other projects in the village's history, recent actions have made it clear that there is no real interest from our president in preserving that history. There appears to be no appetite from President Colley or the village to restore the historic bricks as they exist. It is true, this is true of Sixth Street, likely to be true of First Street in the future, and may be true of other historic preservation initiatives in years to come. President Colley and the village have not engaged meaningfully with the residents of Sixth Street to find a viable path to save this town's historic street. While President Colley did host a meeting with Sixth Street residents, this was only after the patch had published an article indicating initial plans from the village regarding the creation of an SSA. Only a few days' notice was provided to homeowners, leaving many unable to attend. The most recent letter from December twenty first, which was delivered via email to only a small subset of Sixth Street residents for whom the village had email addresses, asked homeowners to make a significant financial decision over the holidays based on no firm facts. Homeowners receiving the letter via mail received it sometime after December twenty first. The letter curiously requests a response from homeowners on January eighth, a day prior to the next village meeting on January ninth, which was then removed, moved on extremely short notice to the evening of the eighth. Based on these facts, it would appear that President Colley and the village have little interest in material engagement from Sixth Street residents or any other residents, uh, Hinsdale residents for that matter. Furthermore, we have not been given the opportunity to engage directly with our elected trustees since this new SSA information came to light. Unfortunately, there appears to be a tactical and concerted effort to circumvent meaningful engagement with village residents and impacted homeowners by rushing these meetings and creating arbitrary deadlines around the holiday season, even though, even though impacted homeowners have been inquiring with the village about the street's proposed plans for nearly two years. While the residents of Sixth Street want to see our historic streets saved, we need real engagement from the village to make this a reality. We want to know what other Hinsdale residents think about the issue. Are historic features of our town worth, worth investment from the village as a whole? Could support of the Robbins Park Historical District's largest asset be spread across the entire district? We feel these are cornerstones of what makes Hinsdale charming and unique. While one individual historic feature is not going to make or break the village, the destruction of historic Sixth Street would set a dangerous precedent and put historical preservation within the town on a downward spiral towards nonexistence. We are respectfully abstaining from responding to the village's request at this time regarding our support or rejection of creation of the SSA. We request additional dialogue and information with our elected officials in the village in order to make an informed decision. Signed, twenty-four impacted Sixth Street residents. Thank you all, I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
I do think there are some other members, uh, or other individuals.
Well, let me just first address the, the points in the letter. So, you know, we had some email addresses, and we sent the email to the person, the people for whom we had email addresses. I think we mailed letters to all the other people. And the notice that was given was an expression of interest in an SSA. We wanted to know whether there was any appetite on Sixth Street to have an SSA. It wasn't a definitive decision on the SSA, the whole process for an SSA takes six months. We wanted to see where the people were interested in it. If you're not interested in it, you're not interested in it. But this was not a decision that had to be made in a short period of time. In fact, you have until March one to make the decision as to do you want the SSA. If you want it, you want it, if you don't, you don't. So, and the other thing that, that, uh, you know, I, I think residents fail to, to recognize is the board has already talked about and put in the, the budget, eight hundred thousand dollars to do partial brick for Sixth Street. Eight hundred thousand dollars. That, and you, and there's many residents have said to me, well, we haven't touched that road in seventy years. For eight hundred thousand dollars, we could have paved the road three or four times. So there's eight hundred thousand dollars we're willing to pay without even going to the residents that no other street has had, eight hundred thousand dollars. There's an additional two hu, two million dollars to do on brick. So the project now for next year is four point five million dollars. That includes the eight hundred thousand dollars to do part in brick. And if we add two more million dollars, that's six point five million dollars to do one street between, between Garfield and County Line Road. That's a big, that's a big, uh, that's a hard swallow for us. It's not as though I'm against preservation. It's not as though we don't want to do this. I would love to do it, but I think everybody has to realize we are limited by the amount of money we have. The argument that brick streets last forever is a good argument, but if you follow that argument, why don't we do every street in Hinsdale we brick? We'd be, we'd be broke in a year. So everything has a financial component to it, and that's what I'm trying to figure out. I'm trying to work with the residents to figure out what they want to do. And so we sent out a notice to residents, what do you think about an SSA? You didn't have to decide, it was an expression of interest. If you're not interested, you're not interested. But there's, it's a six-month process, and you have to make the final decisions to do you want to go with the SSA by March one, and then the process would go from there. So, you know, it's, 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 uh, it's not something that I take lightly. I do believe in historic preservation. We have two other options you guys can consider besides Sixth Street. The other is to do it for the entire Robbins Historic District, okay? You could talk about an SSA there. There are three hundred and, um, uh, what is it, fifty homes? I think there's some churches that we tried to back out. So roughly for the Robbins Historic District, it would be about, uh, eight hundred and seventy dollars per year for each household in the Robbins Historic District. So that's another option. The final option we have, because so many residents have told me that everybody in the village wants to see Sixth Street in brick, is to try to put it off for a year and talk to the Illinois EPA about putting it off for a year and put it on the November referendum. And well, the question to, to the residents around the village would be that Sixth Street wants to go brick, the delta between a paved street and a brick street is three million dollars. Do you want to pay three, the, the, that, the village to pay that, which would be about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or five, five, not five hundred and fifty, five hundred and fifty dollars per household? I think, put it on November referendum. So those are the three options I see. So the, the, the benefit of doing it for just Sixth, Sixth Street is those are the people who are most directly impacted, right? So I think you get the highest number of people without, in, in the abstract, thinking it's a good idea. But once you tie a dollar figure to it, which is for the average house on Sixth Street is about, um, ten thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars per year, it's a, it's, it's hard for you to swallow. As everybody knows, economics means something. A decision's always easier when it's free, but it's not free. It's about ten thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars per household on Sixth Street, okay? So if you don't want to do that, let's talk about the Robbins area. So that's eight hundred and seventy dollars per year for each household in the Robbins area. If you don't want to do that, let's talk about a referendum. Then this board won't have to take unbased word for whether the village wants it as a whole. We'll put it on the ballot, see what people want. And if everybody believes that we should spend three million dollars to pay, to do brick from, from Garfield Street to County Line Road on one street in the village for three million dollars, then we'll do it. So those seem to be three reasonable options to me. And you, and, and, and we have until March one to do this. And the argument that, that we haven't provided the numbers is not right. We have estimates for this, right? We've provided you with estimates, and the estimates are good estimates, but they're not exact. So you can take the two million dollars, you can divide it by the number of households, and you can call Carrie. In the letter we sent, Carrie said, if you call me, I'll tell you how much the, the assessed value for a home would be if you had SSA for Sixth Street. She got one phone call. We'll tell you the number. The amount of mon, money is two million dollars, it's financing over ten years. If you want to do over thirty, we could talk about doing it over thirty. Of course, you pay more interest if you do it over thirty. The interest rate for five years is five point five percent. So we, the, all the information is here. Now, we haven't gone out the bid because we haven't submitted the documents for bid yet. We're going to send them out next week. They will come back at the, at February twentieth, so then we'll know. We'll open the bids on February twentieth, we'll present them to the board on March, what is the date on March, uh, March nineteenth. So that will be the first day we'll have a village board vote on that. So, it'll be pretty close to two million dollars, and I just don't really see that there's so much uncertainty that the residents can't decide whether they want to proceed with an SSA based upon the two million dollars, because that's pretty close to the number we're going to get for an all-brick street, including, again, the eight hundred thousand dollars we're putting in to, 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 from the village that no other street has gotten, eight hundred thousand dollars. And when, and it really irritates me when residents say we're not doing anything for, for historic preservation. We are willing to contribute eight hundred thousand dollars to one street, eight hundred thousand. It's the two million we have a tough time with, the additional two million to do all brick. So eight hundred thousand is a big, big number. So we, it, it, what we did for the historic preservation for Sixth Street is eight hundred thousand dollars. That's what we did. So to say we did nothing for historic preservation is not right. And we're willing to work with you. Referendum, if you want that, we'll do that. Want to do the Robbins, uh, area, the whole Historic District, we can do that too. So these are options.
Yeah, so I appreciate it, just, just a couple comments here, and then I'll open it up to others, uh, that may have comments as well. Um, I appreciate your thoughts, uh, and the additional commentary. I think two out of the three options that you've mentioned, um, I, I don't want to speak for others in the room, but those are new to me. Um, I don't think that we've heard about assessing at the Robbins, uh, Historical District. I don't think that we've heard the, the other option either, so.
Right, and the re, the reason why we didn't do that is because we first thought, if the Sixth Street residents want to have an SSA, which is probably be the group that is most passionate about this, let's see whether they're interested. So we sent out, what, thirty-five? We got two noes and one abstentions. So, okay, that doesn't sound to work, se, seem like that's going to work. So then we thought of the other options. So that's why this is an iterative process.
Agreed, no, and, and I appreciate the presentation of the other options. I think that's the first time that we're hearing that they're even on the table, so genuinely do appreciate that. Um, I think the, the, uh, other reason that you saw a lot of people abstaining in conversations that we had trying to understand, uh, uh, from, from others, did they, did they feel comfortable with it or not, is they've been given virtually no information on the SSA other than what was in the letter. If they didn't attend a previous meeting, uh, the one in, earlier in December, uh, all they had was what was in the letter, and they could have gotten the financials, which some of us did do via email. I think there was more than one, that individual that reached out. Um, but the information there doesn't provide any details as to the financing cost. It didn't address a thirty-year option, it only provided the ten-year option. It didn't talk about any administrative fees and what those fees earn. So a lot of people, a majority of people felt they had inadequate information to even provide an initial yes or no answer. So, so that is where, I think, a lot of heads were coming from, from the residents of Sixth Street. That said.
Right.
I will let others define.
But there are, if you, I mean, we put, I think we had Kathleen's number in there and Carrie's number and then the finance person and, and the village manager. Fair enough, I, I mean, I thought that people would call, but we can certainly have meetings. I mean, you can certainly finance it over thirty years. Um, you're, you, of course, the interest rate's not going to be five point five percent if you do it over thirty years. It's going to be a higher interest rate, right? It's going to be more interest.
Yeah, understood, but I think a lot of people didn't need, none of that information has been shared, right? But those options, so I think we would just appreciate the additional dialogue on these options.
Happy to do it, but we'll, but I guess that we, 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 ships passing and night is the intent of the notice. The intent of the notice is more, is this an idea that we should explore further? Not, you have to decide now. So it was just, this is, we have several options we can do, right? One is Sixth Street, we can, then we move on to a bigger area, then we move on to the village as a whole. If the residents want to see, hear all those options, happy to have a meeting where we talk about all the options, talk about thirty-year financing, um, we talk about, um, the cost, I think you can pretty much go to the bank on the two million dollars, because I think that we've done enough streets, I think we're pretty solid, that the delta between the hybrid approach, where we put in eight hundred thousand dollars, and a full brick street is about two million dollars. So I think that's a pretty solid number you go to the bank on. If it's a little overage, the village will probably pick that up. But that's, that is roughly the number, so I don't think that's a unknown. But if residents want to know more about different options for financing, like I, when we did the SSA in the Woodlands, many people just wrote a check, so they didn't pay any financing costs, they just paid the whole amount. So that's an option too. But if it's a lack of information you want, then we can address that. If the idea is, no, we don't want to have an SSA, we got to figure that out fairly quickly so we can figure out other options. So that's what I'm trying to do, is figure out whether it's, you just need more information and you want to make, and you're, and you're okay with the idea and concept, but you want to make sure you get more information. That's one scenario. The other scenario is, no, we don't want to do it, we want a larger group to pay for it. That's another scenario. Are we going to move on to that one? That's the one I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, yeah. Um, one other question, Tom. Uh, when we met last, there was an idea floated of doing the main streets in brick and the intersections in asphalt. Um, can you advise, where did that?
You got to brush.
Uh, the, the main streets in brick and the, and the intersections in asphalt.
Right.
Yeah.
We, 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 we looked at that, and it was about a million and a half dollars additional cost.
Compared to the two million for, okay.
Right, because it just requires more engineering work, and it was, it was, it was expensive.
Okay, is that an option to still consider?
It's an option to still consider if we, but we have to decide, we have to, the problem is, is when everything is in play, you get nothing done, right? I mean, when you've got, when you're, when you're trying to figure out what it is you're going to do, what is, you're going to finance it, who's going to pay for it, you never move off the dime. And so we have to kind of like say we have to finally decide things. And so, you know, i- if, if you're talking about it as an option, not an option the village would pay for, because I think the eight hundred thousand dollars we put in is, is it. Um, but if you're talking about an option that was financed for the residents, we certainly can talk about that too. If we, it would be another design.
Yeah.
And I just want to be clear on that. Did I hear correctly that the intersections would be?
We had a meeting, they wanted to flip it. They wanted the intersections in asphalt in the, in front of the house in brick. And we, and we looked at that, the engineering department go back, and Scott looked at that. What was the number, Scott? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it was significant, it was over, well over a million dollars.
Okay, okay.
See, I, as I said, we're not trying, we're not trying to jam anything down anybody's throat. We're not trying to, you know, fulfill an agenda that we've already decided. We are trying to reach the best result, but as I've said before, we have an obligation to the entire village, and I am just concerned about spending three million dollars to put brick on one street. That's, that's it, that's the only issue I have. Am I for preservation? Sure I am, but everything comes at a cost. I mean, there, there are no solutions, there's only trade-offs. That's, that's the way the world works. And so if we've got solutions you guys want to talk about, I'm willing to listen to them. But I'm not your enemy, I'm not.
Appreciate that. I, uh, I have a few more thoughts, but I'll open it up to others, uh, that may want to comment on Sixth Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, when you were citing, uh, the amount paid on a property tax bill, how many years would that be over?
Everything was over ten, everything was over ten. Now, you could do it over, Carrie will tell you that that, she just, I can't get her to think about it any longer than ten years because the financing charges start to dwarf the principal. But we can certainly spread things out over thirty years. But, you know, I think she thinks that that's, doesn't make any sense, and, you know, whatever.
Good evening. Uh, Bill Harlow, one forty-four East Sixth Street. Um, I spoke, uh, last time at some length, so I'm not going to subject that to you tonight. Uh, I did receive an email from David McNeil, who's one of our neighbors on Sixth Street who could not be here this evening, uh, which he asked me to, uh, read this evening. Uh, so I'm quoting here.
Yeah, I got a lot of comments on this one.
Yeah. I certainly would like my name added to the list of residents on Sixth Street supporting this letter. Furthermore, if you consider the amount of money saved over many decades of not having to fix potholes and grind up and repave, and repave again cheap asphalt on Sixth Street because it was made out of durable bricks, where is my cut of the savings? If I am personally supposed to pay for the bricks, I should also benefit from the village not having to pay for maintenance by receiving a no-street-maintenance-cost dividend check. Twenty-five years have gone by, and I still haven't seen that check. But all of a sudden, rebuilding it properly in brick is expensive, and now it's my personal problem and my neighbor's personal problem. As I said, I haven't seen a check come in my mailbox from the village because they don't have to spend the street maintenance money. But now, on a street that's well over a hundred years old, that has served its life out, saving all village residents tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars or possibly more in repair bills over the decades, all of a sudden, this is something that we as Sixth Street residents are supposed to personally be responsible for? Who is smoking the peyote in the village hall? I have owned two oh five East Sixth Street for the last twenty-five years. When Burns Field on the northeast side of town, uh, northwest, now needs new tennis courts or landscaping or maintenance or anything else, I'm thrilled with my tax dollars contributing to these upgrades and maintenance, even though my three children never once played at Burns Field. Maintaining Burns Field and upgrading it was for the common good of our whole community. Emphasis there on the whole. Properly rebuilding Sixth Street in brick is a phenomenal investment for the whole community, and it is only using money that wasn't spent over the last many decades repairing it because it didn't need to be repaired. I pay almost six figures in real estate, uh, every year, real estate taxes every year over the last quarter century, and that was to cover many things, including fixing and rebuilding Sixth Street in brick. I'm sure our property values will take a hit if all of a sudden we become homes that are on an asphalt street. If our properties are burdened with some special assessment, then that will also lower our property values. Someone has to be the lawyer here, so how many residents need to be financially hurt before we can file a class action lawsuit? I'll kick in a hundred thousand dollars to prove my legal point because I'm offended in my core by the mere thought of a resident having to pay to rebuild a historic street properly. The precedent of having local homeowners upgrade local issues is a slippery slope. When the north side of town needs new stormwater pipes, don't call me. Is that how we want to run this village? As I said, I owned my home on Sixth Street for twenty-five years, and coincidentally, before that, I lived on First Street, which is also brick, where I lived in nineteen ninety-two until I moved to what is truly important to me, another brick street. In fact, when people ask me about my home in Hinsdale, I say, quote, "It's on a brick street that's over one hundred years old." That's a meaningful and historic description, and it is an important part of our history and it's part of the roots of our community. It's not that I don't want to contribute, it's that I've paid over two million in real estate taxes living on Sixth Street, and that's more than plenty enough to fix my street properly in brick. I'm actually offended that this village would even think about asking the residents, asking us for extra money. I'm not cheap, I'm always willing to pay my fair share and then some, but the thought of some harebrained surcharge by the village for the betterment of the whole village infuriates me. And if you got this far by reading my tirade, then thank you, and thanks for being a great bunch of neighbors. David McNeil, two oh five East Sixth Street. End quote. So, um, what Mr. McNeil said notwithstanding, I think it's important to note that the SSA letter that we got three days before Christmas really did not come across as a statement of intent, like a straw poll. This is something you may or may not be interested in. It was an official forum where we were to choose yes or no. I'm in favor or I am not. Uh, it was not explained, uh, that this was sort of a gauging attempt sure of the room. And I think that's why you found that more than three quarters of the affected residents just didn't submit any vote yea or nay, uh, and instead that's why they abstained. The other thing that was noted in the letter is that some of the suggestions that were brought up for further consideration at the, uh, non-public meeting, the private meeting we had upstairs, can we keep the width the same? Could the bricks be done for the interior rather than, of the blocks rather than for the intersections and so on? Uh, there were only two lines in the letter and just said they were too expensive. Um, again, no real numbers. So, I think that if, it's also my sense, I should also say this, that until the last meeting, the prior meeting of the board in December, uh, we did not, um, have any conversation with any of the trustees. Uh, we were told at that meeting that this was new information to the trustees, uh, and so it certainly gave the impression that this was being, uh, determined by a small group of people, and we were being presented with, these are your options, these are not your options. I think that everybody is very interested in having a, uh, honest and serious conversation about our options. That doesn't necessarily mean during public petition time at a village board meeting, but it does mean having those meetings and not just being subject to, uh, late communications with what seem to be arbitrary deadlines. So I would hope that going forward, we could have that type of an approach, uh, from the village as opposed to the one that the residents are clearly not happy with, uh, so far. Uh, this is not one or two people, this is almost everybody on these affected blocks. It's really pretty angry about the way this has been handled. Um, so I will close my comments there.
Well, now, now that you know it was an expression of interest, we have some time to express the interest. So, and the extent you want, and, and also, one of the reasons we did some of this before Christmas is because we got word that a number of residents were leaving after Christmas, it would be in Florida, and so we tried to get this out. And so it, it was an expression of interest. It's a long process to do an SSA. Now that everybody knows that, we can have as many meetings as you want, but we have to make a decision by, by March one. We have to decide what we're going to do. As to Mr. McNeil's email, you know, number one, he talks about tens to hundreds of thousands of dollars that were saved on Sixth Street. But again, once again, we're willing to kick in eight hundred thousand dollars. That surely covers repaving Sixth Street three or four times. So he didn't recognize that in his email. He may not have known that, but that's the fact. And he talks about Burns Field and storm sewers on north side of town. We pay for all of the parks. I don't think it's fair to, to, to compare one street to a park. And as, as far as new stormpipes, we're paying for the stormpipes at Sixth Street. It costs us about three and a half million dollars. So what we're talking about here is an all bricks, all brick street. So that doesn't make any sense. As it relates to the, the real estate taxes he paid, you know, Mr. McNeil should know that ninety-three percent of his real estate tax goes to the schools or to DuPage County. We only get seven percent. So the lion's share of the real estate tax doesn't come to us. And the extent he thinks he's paying too much in taxes, that's precisely what I'm trying to prevent happening in the future. I'm trying to keep costs down. That's why we're, we're having these meetings. That's why we're talking about this, is I'm concerned about the amount of money the village is spending and has spent in the past. So, we have until March one. And again, you know, we're talking about all the brick streets. We used to have lots of brick streets in the town. The reason why they're not still brick streets is because it's too expensive to keep them as brick streets. And it's much cheaper to put them in asphalt. And if, if the rational decision was to put all brick streets in, we would, we would, as I said, quickly go bankrupt. So we can't do that. It just doesn't make sense from just, you know, from a cost benefit perspective. You just can't balance your budget by doing your, all the streets in brick. So, and again, as he relates to the whole community, I'm offering, if the residents want this, to put it on the ballot in, in November. And we will tell them, do you want to pay three million dollars to do Sixth Street in brick? And see what they say.
If we delayed until 2025, do we run into issues with ARPA funds or just?
Yes.
Well.
Yeah, but I'm willing to do it because if, 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 if people were of the view that this is a, from my perspective and the board's perspective, I think our biggest problem is, is that we're doing, spending three million dollars for one street. And we've got other residents who'll say, why do you do that? Why would you pay three million dollars for their street and not do this for me or whatever it may be? And so the only way I think that we could answer that with a straight faith is, well, we put it on the ballot. You voted for it. So it seems to me that, uh, that's one way to, to determine the, 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 the thesis that has been propounded by residents, that this is a, this is a, an asset of the village, not an asset of Sixth Street. If that's the case, then you shouldn't have any concern about it passing on, on a ballot. And we will, we will try to work through the consequences of putting it off for a year.
And what would be the cost of putting it off for a year?
Well, you probably, I'm sure you'd pay more money than three million dollars because it's going to be fifteen percent more. Or, or at least, I don't know what the exact numbers are, but is, my experience has been with inflation, the longer you put things off, the more you pay for them. We'll have to rearrange some projects and do other things, but I think it's, it's doable to do a referendum.
Yeah, well, I don't doubt that it's doable to do a referendum. I, I guess I would respond to that by saying, you know, the MIP was already in existence when I came on the board fifteen years ago. So, uh, yes, it gets more expensive every year. And Sixth Street has been kicked down the road, no pun intended, for several years now.
Right.
I think it's not, it's not a coincidence that the most expensive items were saved for less, but I think we all wish that we could pay two thousand five prices rather than two thousand twenty-four prices
Right.
for this. And the risk of losing ARPA funds, which my understanding are more in excess of a million dollars.
Yeah, but there may be, I mean, money's fungible. We can, we, I'm looking at that. But it may be that we can keep those funds and put it in our referendum in November.
Okay, well.
And the other option obviously is to do the, the Robbins Historic District. And just do that district and do an SSA. But the whole intent of the, of the notice to the residents is, is you want to do this as Sixth Street. If not, let's talk about something else. That was the purpose of it. It was just a, it was just a solicitation of interest. Because this would be a formal vote on this. And if, if it doesn't pass by fifty-one percent, it either the SSA would be Sixth Street or the Robbins area, you know, then it doesn't pass. And then obviously the referendum, it's fifty-one percent there, too. So, you know, some group's going to decide this because, as I understand it, eight hundred thousand dollars for one street is about, for aesthetics for one street is about all we can do as a village and not two million, eight hundred thousand.
Okay, well, I think that if we can have some meaningful meetings about this as opposed to having these back and forth during public comment period,
Sure, absolutely.
that, that would be helpful. And, and that to have those, I mean, the, the problem we run into, I think, is that from an Open Meetings Act perspective, it can't be with all the trustees.
No.
And it seems like they have largely not been a part of this discussion so far.
Well, I do have, I do talk to all the trustees all the time about this. One-off.
Right. So I'm not exactly sure how we make progress in that regard, but.
Well, I think that what, what, what the interaction could be between me and the staff and the, and the residents would be, what do you want to do? And then we can present that to the board. Isn't that, I mean, I don't know why, th- there's, there's two sides. It's what the board is willing to approve and what the residents want to do. Right? And so if the residents to say, we don't want an SSA for Sixth Street, then we move on to an SSA for the Robbins area or we move on to a referendum. And whatever, and what the residents decide they want to do, then we can present that to the board.
Okay. It's very difficult for any of us to say we want an SSA or not. I mean, I think as a straw poll, I think most people would say, sure, we're open to the possibility of one.
Sure, sure.
But until we have real numbers, you know, whether, whether we can talk about whether Sixth Street residents who may or may not be most interested in this, because it benefits them the most, or it's the Robbins District or it's the entire village, it's very difficult to have a conversation, the, as you suggest. The first place people go is, well, what, what would that cost?
Right, right.
And we don't have any numbers there.
Well, they, we do, I mean, that, one of the reasons we put Carrie's number in, in the email we sent or the letter we sent, is that she has a spread schedule with each PIN number on it that would have the amount that you would pay, given a ten-year financing at five and a half percent, which is, she's, she's gone out and looked at the financing for ten years, it's five and a half percent. If you want to call her or if you want to have a meeting, we go through all these, we can. And you can, we can talk about ten years, we can talk about fifteen years, we can talk about thirty years, give you your own, your own tag, you know, your own property number, tell you what it would mean for you. We can do that. We're happy to do that.
Which is, again, based off an estimate.
Well, but the estimate, you can pretty much go to the bank on the estimate.
If that's what it is, then that's what it is. It is, it's, it doesn't seem, my personal opinion is, I think it's unlikely that there's going to be a lot of reception to, if we go with an SSA and it's an additional two million dollars, that each of you is on hook for a hundred-plus thousand dollars. And then, and so then what's the village's response? Well, too bad? Like, you either cough up and, you each are, are on a hook for, you know, six figures? Or you're just out of luck?
Well, that's, it's, it's, yeah, we, we put in eight hundred thousand, we're asking the residents to put in a two million. The residents can be Sixth Street residents, the residents can be the Robbins Park area or it can be a referendum in the village at large. We have a two million dollar issue.
Okay. Well, but let's have, let's have some meetings where we can talk about this in greater depth in a forum that's perhaps more appropriate than this one.
Sure.
But I think that would be a good way to change things going forward.
Okay.
So it's not so, um, no one wants it to be acrimonious.
No, I don't want it to be acrimonious either.
Okay.
Opinions aside, I do think we should run the thirty-year scenario. I mean, it's a seven.
I do, too. I can't, I can't, Carrie doesn't like thirty years, but I think we should run the thirty years because she, she looks at the financing, she's a finance person. So any finance person will never tell you to do something for thirty years.
But it's a seven-year.
It's about an extra two-point-three million dollars in interest.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
But over thirty years, the present value.
Or model's twenty.
So it's like six-point-seven-five.
We can run the numbers all which ways. And so we can do the thirty years, we can have, we can prepare a schedule for each resident which shows what you'd pay ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty. And for your particular PIN number, we can print out a sheet, mail to each resident so everybody knows exactly what it'd be. But I would not think that the two million dollars is a number that's, has much play to it. That's, that's pretty much the number.
Okay. So, let's have some meetings to talk about going forward.
Okay.
And Tom, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Sorry. Could you poll or vote rather for the Sixth Street residents first? And if that doesn't pass, could you move on to the Robbins Park Historic District residents? Or is that kind of all or nothing?
Yeah, well, I mean, the, the, well, me, you end up then really putting it off to next year for sure. And if, I, I think that if we, we, if we do a referendum, I think we have to put it off for next year because we can't have the referendum until November.
Right.
But if we do the, if we do the, um, the, as, one of the S, two SSA routes, we have to, we have to jump on that pretty quickly. So we could, we could do, if, if we got answers in February, we could use, um, well, if we got answers in January, we could use February to poll the larger Robbins Park area with a, you know, expression of interest about that. And then by March one, when we get the actual final numbers, you know, have, have an idea as to what size SSA we want. So I would like to do that. I mean, I'd rather not put it off for next year because it's going to cost me. Anybody else?
Hi, Laurel Harlow, 144 Sixth. Just following on that train of thought. I believe that the letter that we received in December said, if an SSA is implemented, the village would pay for the work using a bond. And then the SSA is used to essentially repay the bond. Am I correct about that? Is that how it works?
You're financing the two million dollars over a period of time.
Right.
The SSA would be the principal plus the interest relating to that period of time. What the village would pay for is all legal costs for getting that all done. The bonding process, the SSA process, all that, the village would pay for that.
Right. But the work has to, you know, the contractors have to be paid, the engineers have to be paid and so forth. And that is happening in practicality through a bond.
Right.
Right? So why couldn't we do, well, okay, two options. One would be, a bond could be used to pay for the whole thing. And I guess that's where the referendum would come in, that's.
No, no, the referendum would be, see, every time you float a bond, the overall interest rates for the village goes up. You know, the more debt you have, the more, um, the, the, you, you, you endanger the triple-A bond rating. So I'd rather not issue village bonds. That's, that's one of the problems. We either can pay some, you know, people think all you've got to do is have the village issue a bond. There's a limit to how much the village can issue. And also, we are very concerned about, while the federal government has a, you know, money printing machine in the back room, we don't. So the more bonds you issue, the more you pay each quarter in interest costs. And pretty soon, we had some years where this is a problem, where the amount of money you're paying to fund the bonds is pretty much eating all of your revenue, where you don't have money to do, you know, cash to do new projects. So it's just, the money just doesn't grow on trees. So, you know, we were very careful about issuing bonds on the village. This would be a bond that would be issued by a special service area. It would be the residents' bond. So the residents would be.
I see.
It'd be a lean on tax.
Additional tax would be the alternate revenue source for the bond.
The revenue source would be the incremental tax that you would pay on your property tax.
Okay. So, then is that why the, the group in the SSA has to be determined before the bond could be issued?
Correct.
I see, okay.
Correct, correct. I mean, if you were to do this, I mean, in, in, in a perfect world, you would have the SSA set up before you even go out to bid. So you, you make, and you use estimates so that you know how you're going to finance it. These things are going to sadly run on parallel tracks to some extent, which, you know, so I think we can do it, but I, because I want to give the residents enough time to figure out what the best option is.
Right.
But you, we have to figure out who's in the bucket that is going to pay this before we can even start the SSA project. So, as I said, for SSA, there's two options. Sixth Street or the Robbins Historic District, right? Those are the two options. And, and the problem you run for the Robbins Historic District, I, I don't know. Maybe everybody thinks that Sixth Street is something that they're willing to pay for. But the further people get away from Sixth Street, the less certain you can be that they're going to vote yes. That's the issue.
Right. I don't, I don't have an opinion on that today. I do wonder if we were going to approach the entire Robbins Park as an SSA, if First Street should be folded into it so that it's a.
Those details, I have none.
You know.
Then that's the, that's the one issue you always have is who's in and who's out. People on the, on the, on the fringes don't want to be in and, you know, you already did my street, why should I pay for this? That's why we have to, you know, we, it's, those are the two options. I just don't, you know, we can fine tune it later, but those are the two options.
Okay.
Then it would be four million dollars.
Sorry, um.
Well, it's shorter. It's a shorter length.
Laurel. What, can you clarify about First Street? They, they are part of Robbins Park Historic District. So they would obviously be part of the share cost.
Well, as I understand it, First Street will be a part of the next MIP and it needs to be reconstructed as well. And so we're going to go through this whole process again in just a few years.
I see what you're saying. The, the future work, I'm so sorry, yes. I was thinking of residents voting on that in, on First Street, okay. Correct.
So, okay, thank you.
It's one block.
One block.
From Park Two L. It costs us twice as much as we thought it would cost.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me speak. My name's Ryan Trombley. I lived for four years up near Burns Park and then I moved to 132 E Sixth Street. And that's a difficult decision you guys have in the modern world. And so I think at the end of the day, we have to respect what you guys decide. But I think the nuts and bolts or the nickels and dimes are, are just the wrong way to look at it. I think we live in Hinsdale for a reason. When I lived in North Clay Street, we would go for a walk down to Southeast Hinsdale where the zoning is different. You guys have arguments about zoning and subdivisions of the, about the zones, you know, all of it. It's just, it's a different area of town and it has two brick streets. And I'm not exactly sure why you're happy to pay eight hundred thousand and not two million for that.
It'd be eight hundred thousand plus an additional two million, so altogether it'd be two-point-eight million.
Whatever it is.
Yeah.
The modern world, money, money's.
But see, whatever it is, whatever it is is what causes villages to go bankrupt. Whatever it is is why people can't pay their bills. Because, and I'm not a whatever it is kind of person. You look at how much it costs. And so what you're saying suggests that we do a referendum. If you think that people on the other side of town are in favor of this, then you should be happy with a referendum, which we can do in November.
That's definitely a better, I mean, I think part of the, the conflict here is the December emails. Why was it only be Sixth Street on the SSA? Why wouldn't it be Seventh Street and Fifth Street? Why, you know, there's a house six-ten South Oak that faces Sixth Street but has an Oak Street address. Would it be in or out? I mean, it's just too.
So maybe, maybe the, maybe the answer's a referendum.
Well, I think that's a better answer, but I think a better answer would be for you guys to be better trustees of what Hinsdale is. And I'm not trying to say that in a negative way. I totally respect what you guys do. But I do think this is a town that has a hundred-year-old brick road. And I do think people benefit from it, even if you live on North Clay Street indirectly. And it's just like when your kids graduate, you know, high school. Do you stop paying taxes? Do you get a different tax burden? It's just a town and that, and that's just what I would, if I were a trustee, that's how I would look at it. But I know it's difficult.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Janet Petty-Lawman. I've been living with my husband Fred, sitting in the back there on Sixth Street since nineteen eighty-seven. I freely admit I'm not here to try to resolve the financial issues, but just to make a plea for historical significance. I do also want to say that we do support the concerned residents as listed on the letter that was dated January the eighth, twenty twenty-four, and previous communications on the preservation of the Sixth Street Brick Road. I literally landed today, just six hours ago, back from London, England, where I celebrated the holidays with my extended family. You see, I'm a proud British-American. As I return frequently to England, I am continually impressed with our ability to adapt and preserve historical and ancient structures to a more modern way of life in both Britain and in Europe at large. I grew up in a small town where the market square is cobbled with bricks, installed some eight hundred years ago and where they still remain today intact, central to a busy town. While in London last week, I visited many historic sites with my American grandkids. Tower of London, a thousand years old, bricked pavements. Hampton Court, five hundred years old, the same longevity of brick roads and streets with low maintenance is visible to all. Preserving history with its charm and its grace and absolute significance is an important fact of life in Europe and it should be in America, too. We tear down too many houses too soon. This grace and charm of historic significance is much admired by many tourists, including many Americans who pour into these countries. We simply ask the current Board of Trustees to view the Sixth Street Brick Road with the same enthusiasm and reverence and hope that you will support our efforts when we talk to the community at large. What is old is not always to be discarded. What is new is not always the best solution. Sixth Street Brick Road, along with many other bricked and cobbled streets, has surely, surely stood the test of time. We ask you to take into consideration the few, albeit rather rare, repairs and extremely low maintenance cost that has been afforded this road in the past. And going forward, the same can be expected, for indeed, brick roads are proven to be, proven to be cost effective. We ask that you compare these costs to both the time and the money spent repairing, replacing, and further repairing the newly laid Ashvelt Roads laid in Hinsdale. And I might add, for which these residents of Sixth Street have helped fund, while our road lay neglected. We ask that you consider your decision carefully. This board will be ever attached to the decision to preserve or to demolish a valued and historic entity. Indeed, as President Corley is quoted in Histalian on December the twentieth last year, "Historical preservation is the goal of the village board." We ask that you do indeed keep that promise. You see, what is new is not always the better, or indeed, the best solution. And what is old should not necessarily be discarded, but be considered in terms of longevity, cost effectiveness, and stewardship. And to re-quote, "Historical preservation is the goal of the village board." How does dismantling the Sixth Brick, Sixth Street Brick Road achieve this goal, I ask rhetorically? Fred and I both fully support the decision to maintain this road that is significant to our local history. Significant to the local history. And I ask that the board seriously look at the long-term impact on preservation and financial benefit to all. I appreciate you listening to my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm happy to share this letter with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you. My name is Bill Trader. I live at one eighteen E Sixth Street, and have lived there with my wife for forty-one years. We're hearing two million, eight hundred thousand, blah, blah, blah. Uh, and we have a finance director that doesn't want us to do thirty-year financing.
Well, we, she just, she doesn't, she didn't not wanna do it, she just.
I understand that.
So we're happy to do it, that's what the residents want.
How about seventy-five year financing? That'd be the fifth repaving of Sixth Street if it's done in asphalt. Because your own engineering department says asphalt streets should be replaced every fifteen years. So, to compare the cost today of brick versus the cost of one asphalt application is an erroneous study.
Right, but under that logic, why don't we do all the streets in brick?
That's an excellent question.
We don't have the money.
Well, you have money for one street, probably.
Well.
But let's, let's evaluate, let's not kick it down the road, you know? In, in twenty sixteen, you did one block in First Street.
Which cost us twice as much as we thought it would.
So you found something out, did you not?
That's, that's why we're here.
And, and at that time, we were told Sixth Street was gonna be done in twenty twenty-one. Nobody told us until after twenty twenty-one that it wasn't. Then it was gonna be done in twenty twenty-four. President Corley, you're quoted in the, the minutes from the, uh, December twelfth meeting, as you worked with the staff for years on this problem.
Right.
Has there been any consultation with a resident of Sixth Street during those years?
We knew what this residents of Sixth Street wanted. They wanted an all-brick street, and they wanted us to pay for it. That wasn't hard to figure out. I mean, I, that's, that's been loud and clear since the beginning. So what we're trying to do is find a way to do it preserving the street, and that's why we.
All I'm asking you to do is to do it with studying equal cost over seventy-five years.
And that's why, that's why we're kicking in eight hundred thousand dollars to do it partially in brick. And the eight hundred thousand dollars would cost repaving for three or four times. So, that's eight hundred thousand dollars that no other street has gotten. Eight hundred thousand dollars for four blocks. It's two hundred thousand dollars a block.
Okay. How much was Eighth Street from Garfield to County Line?
I have no idea.
That'd be a good study, wouldn't it?
What's the point?
That was in asphalt.
I know it's in asphalt.
This is, eight hundred thousand is the cost above the asphalt.
That's, that's the additional, what we're doing for.
The additional cost.
Right, we're, we're, we're gonna do it.
Three million dollars above an asphalt road.
So Eighth Street was eight thou- eight hundred thousand dollars?
No, 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 no. No, his point is that, that, the delta between an asphalt Sixth Street, four blocks, and doing it partial, the, the, the alternative, we said the partial, is we're willing to kick in, as a village, eight hundred thousand dollars. And my point is, we could have paved Sixth Street, that four blocks, three or four times, with that eight hundred thousand dollars over the last seventy years.
So, is not Eighth Street the same length as Sixth Street, Garfield to County Line?
We paved that, we paved that street.
Yes, and what did it cost? That was my question.
I don't have, I don't carry those numbers around in my head.
Six hundred.
What's, I don't understand the.
Eighth was, oh, we reconstructed East Eighth from County to Garfield.
Right.
We did some utility work, and it was about one point three million dollars to do that project. And we had gotten some.
There was a lot, a lot of utility work with that, too.
There was some water main work, or some adjustments with the storm, storm service. There's actually more utility work.
But in the next seventy-five years, you're gonna do it four more times, resurfacing, correct?
Typically, we resurface every fifteen years or so, yes.
Yeah, so in seventy-five years, that's five resurfacing. So it's five times.
Anyone else? All right, so, and, and again, you know, we, we are all in, in favor of historic preservation. We'd all love to see Sixth Streets stay brick. We are not out to try to, you know, pave it without getting any consideration to keeping it. Uh, as I see it, there, again, there are three options. You know, the option we originally proposed is that the village would kick in eight hundred thousand dollars to do this four blocks, and, and somehow, somebody else would pick up the, the two million difference to do it all brick. That can be Sixth Street, that can be the Robbins Park Historic District, or we can put it on a referendum in November. So I, I suggest you go and think about that, and see what you, what you think. And if you wanna know what it will cost for Sixth, for the, um, Sixth Street, we can sit down and talk to you about, um, your particular parcel property, ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, thirty years, as far as what financing could be.
I'd like to make, well, my name's Fred Lawerman. I'd like to make just one comment on this.
Sure.
If we look at the eight hundred thousand as being the cost of maintaining, uh, an asphalt street, or, or putting that in, and that, that, that's the cost of that, so.
No, 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 that's not, that's not what I said.
What is the eight hundred thousand?
The eight hundred thousand, see, there's a, there was a hybrid approach, where we would do fifty feet at the entrance, and fifty feet at each entrance of Sixth Street in brick. We would do the intersections in brick, and we did the crosswatts in brick, okay? The difference between having an all asphalt street and doing some in brick is eight hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's what we were, the village was going to contribute, the historic preservation of Sixth Street, eight hundred thousand dollars. We thought that was consistent with our role of being proponents of historic preservation, eight hundred thousand dollars. But the problem is, residents wanna do the whole street in a brick, and in addition to the eight hundred thousand dollars, that's two million. So from a straight asphalt street to a all-brick street is about three million dollars.
So, the idea, the idea is that, then, if I understand it, is one point five million would be the, the cost if you did the intersections asphalt and the, and the rest of it in brick, is that right?
I, I, I know it's a four point five million dollar project, including the eight hundred thousand that we're willing to pitch in. And this would be six point five million dollars if we did all brick.
So, so, your, your contribution as a board, uh, you view this as, um, as the public benefit that you're giving back to the residents?
Well, no, I, I don't know that. I viewed it as, I mean, I, I think we, we view the, the fact that brick, that's, that Sixth Street is a brick street to be an important attribute to the community. We'd like to keep some of it brick, and we thought, consistent with all the other obligations we have as far as rising police pensions, rising fire pensions, you know, increased crime, the, the amount of money we spend on, on all the crime prevention around the village we do, that, you know, that, and the things I can't even talk about, that we do to try to track cars and criminals. But, but, but so we thought, what can we put in? So we decided in the last budget period that we could put eight hundred thousand dollars in to advance the cause of historic preservation. And, and so that's, that's what the village board has talked about doing.
Okay, so, so it really, it really comes down to what is the public benefit of this street? And then, and that's a question that's, it's open. I'm not, I don't wanna know that we have an answer.
Well, maybe we could if we did a referendum, right? If, if you, if you sent it out to the entire community, you would know how much the entire viewed, community values the Sixth Street being all brick. Right, that would be one test of the public benefit.
It would be, yeah. Or you could do the, uh, the, uh, the smaller district.
Right, but everything is contingent on how much it costs. If you ask people, how much do it?
I understand that.
Right.
But, my, my point on this all is that, um, if there is a public benefit, that public benefit that is being allocated to the residents of Sixth Street, and that public benefit, then, in a sense, if there is a public benefit, and we don't know what the amount of that is, i- is really a taking from the, from the, from the point of view of, of getting the residents. And what you did in terms of your allocation is you allocated it to only thirty of the houses on, on Sixth Street, and not the thirty-nine who have, uh, footage along Sixth Street.
You're talking about the way we define the SSA?
Yeah, yeah, the way you defined your SSA. So, all, all I'm saying is, you, you, you burdened those residents for what I consider to be a public benefit. And I think that is not, that's kind of a, that's my, that's my only issue.
So, so your concern is that the SSA should be broader, then include more houses?
I think it should be broader, and I think it should be broader, and it should be broader from the, from the standpoint that there's a public benefit to all of this, and that that should be as broad as possible.
Okay.
Where it can, where it can pass. And that's my, that's my issue.
Yeah, and it's, that suggests a referendum, right? Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Tom, can I just say one quick thing?
Sure.
With, with the possibility of an SSA that's the entire Robbins District, uh, I agree with the idea that's been proposed. We would have to wrap First Street into that. It, it doesn't make any sense to.
Yeah, the details, I mean, I'm, I'm, see, the way I, I kind of look at things is start with a broad concept, and then work into the details. I mean, we can, and, and if you start talking details before you figure out the broad concept, you never get anywhere. So, if we talk about a Robbins SSA and everybody thinks that's a good idea, then we could talk about what the, what the limits are of it. If, if that's not a good idea, let's not talk about it. I mean, and if we go back to Sixth Street, let's, you know, you wanna have more houses, and then we could talk about that. But, I, I, I just, I think it's counterproductive to get into granular details when you can't even, when we haven't decided the concept yet.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm suggesting as a starting point. I mean, to me, that is big picture. Is if, if, if you're potentially gonna ask for an SSA that is the Robbins Park Historic District, why, why would you only propose doing one of the two brick streets?
Well, that's, that's a good point.
So I, I would say that.
Oh, that's your point, you do, we would.
That's my, that's my point, is that I think that we would want to include First Street residents, well, all the residents.
Okay, that's a good point.
But First Street needs to be a part of that consideration, otherwise.
Well, the, the, but from, from your perspective, that would be a more dollar, and you're likely to get more no votes if you include First Street in there, but that's.
It's possible.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I mean, you know.
But that's, that's an excellent idea. We could, we can take it as one, um, one bite at the apple, saying we have two brick streets, this is the Robbins Park, this is the Robbins Historic District, you're gonna all benefit from this. That's a good idea. I'm hap- I, I didn't understand it at first, but I understand now, that makes sense.
Yeah, and I don't know ultimately that that would be the way to go, but I'm suggesting that as part of the conversations that I hope we're gonna have going forward, that would be a serious possibility that we would look at, is what if this is not a Sixth Street project? What if this is a Sixth and First Street project that wraps in?
Yeah.
At least those two streets, and then.
Well, and I think we did that, we would have to put it off for a year, because we don't have any cost estimates for First Street.
Right?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, as long as, as, as we felt like the, the danger in that was limited to, you know, what inflation will be in another year. As opposed to inflation and losing ARPA funds.
Right.
You were saying that ARPA funds are fungible.
Well, no, I, 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 I think we could reallocate those other projects. That's my guess at this point. But I haven't determined that finally.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just one last question.
Sure.
In terms of next steps, do you have a, uh, suggested path forward? Is there someone that the group could work with to arrange a, a meeting on topic?
Kathleen, and then, um, and then, uh, get dates from, from her. We can all meet, and we can have, we can have Carrie there with, um, uh, you know, with a schedule that shows. If, if you're talking just about Seventh or Sixth Street, we can have, you know, the houses are included, all the property numbers, um, what it would cost for each house, it was ten years, or twenty years, or thirty years. Provide all that information. We can give you general information about Robbins generally. If the Sixth Street group determines that they wanna do Robbins generally, then we will have a wider conversation with, with, with more people to talk about that as an alternative.
Okay, so we'll start. Kathleen will reach out and talk about dates and proposed agenda items?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Thank you all.
Anyone else? Thanks for coming. We'll work this, we'll, we'll work this out. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to Neil. No, Matt, Matt, sorry.
Okay, uh, item six A, this is a first read, um, to approve a custodial and setup agreement for the KLM Lodge with CertaClean Team LLC. This would be a two-year term for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Due to the variability in the number of events that are held at KLM, from time to time, the village asked, uh, uh, proposed service providers to bid on a per-event basis, along with a volume discount. They received two bids. CertaClean was the leading bidder. Um, they are also the current, uh, service provider at KLM Lodge. I understand that the village has been satisfied, um, with the job that they have performed. The twenty twenty-four budget has allocated twenty-five thousand dollars for the, uh, custodial and setup expenses at KLM. Based on the twenty twenty-three volume, if you use the CertaClean pricing in their bid, um, the price would be eighteen thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. So this would be below our, uh, budget for, uh, for twenty twenty-four. Mike, anything else to add there?
No, that's it, perfect.
Any questions from the board? Consent agenda?
Yep. Okay, who had the consent items accounts payable?
Oh, is it?
Do they have them?
I'm sorry, that was me, I did it a week ago.
Okay, okay, yeah.
My apologies on that. Uh, I went through all the items, uh, just for the board to understand this. I went through them over the Christmas holidays so that they could get, and the process could get started. Uh, but I did not, uh, find any issues or even have any questions on it. As such, I am gonna make a motion to approve payment for the accounts payable for the period of December seventh, two thousand twenty-three through December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, in the aggregate amount of one million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and one dollars and forty-six cents. As set forth on the list provided by the village treasurer, which permanent copy is on file with the village clerk. Second.
Will call vote?
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Sifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Beak?
Aye.
Okay, we have one item on the consent agenda, seven E, can I have a motion with respect to that?
Move to approve consent agenda, item seven B.
Second.
Will call vote?
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Sifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Beak?
Aye.
Okay, um, moves us to agenda item eight A.
Yep.
And, uh, this is a second read. Uh, I would note that the first read for this matter was held on November seventh, so just about two months ago. Uh, it's exterior appearance and site plan review to allow for the installation of a brick wall and bollards for Fuller's Car Wash located at one oh two West Chicago Avenue in the B one district. I'm gonna go through some of the details, only because it's been two months since we've heard this. Uh, but the property is surrounded by various uses in the B one district with no residential, uh, buildings within two hundred and fifty feet, so there was no notification to any residents. Uh, the car wash operates under a special use permit, which was issued by the village in nineteen ninety-five. Um, the applicant did install eleven bollards in Au- in August on the east side of the property, following an accident. The applicant installed the bollards without a permit, and at this time is seeking approval of the bollards, along with a more decorative brick wall which will surround the existing bollards. Uh, I do refer the trustees to the packet which has an illustration of the bollards, but basically, um, it's gonna be a brick wall with, they're gonna be at the end with slightly higher columns, uh, very similar or exactly to what, uh, Fuller Service Center has on the, uh, north side property going along Lincoln Street. So it will match that. Um, the wall is gonna be approximately forty feet in length. Uh, the majority of the wall is gonna be four feet, nine inches, and as I said, the columns will be slightly higher, five and a quarter feet. And with the end caps, there's gonna be a light fixture on the top of each one, which will bring it up to a height of seven feet. The wall will be constructed of brick with limestone caps, and as I said, it's gonna match, uh, the service center along Lincoln. Uh, the plan commission did hold a meeting on this. There were no residents that spoke out, and the plan commission did, uh, recommend approval by a vote of eight to zero. I would note, since the first reading, there were no comments by any of the trustees, or there were no co- uh, residential, resident comments. Uh, there was a request by, uh, individuals to do a testing of the strength of the bollards. And as a result of that, there are gonna be seven additional bollards which are gonna be installed that run north, south, along the Lincoln. Any questions, issues from trustees?
Yeah, just something I want to add to that, Luke. I wanted to look into the, I wanted to look into this a little bit more to see, just to ensure that, you know, sort of good, sound engineering principles were used in the design of this. It's not to say that, Doug, that they, they weren't or anything. But I talked to Scott Creach, our representative from HR Green, and they sent me, they sent me a lot of information to digest, so we got into the shear resistance of the concrete and the bollards and the compression strength of the concrete, and determining the vehicle's center of gravity. All of these things have to be taken into account to come up with a, a good design that's going to do exactly what we want it to, and that's, I mean, I satisfied myself that that has happened, so.
And that was for the bollards only? That was that?
I didn't even take the, we, you know, I know Scott said the brick wall, but I, you know, considering, I didn't even take the brick wall into account.
Yeah. But I think that simply stated that the bollards now are four feet apart, right? So, so the, right, aren't the.
Four inches.
Four feet between the bollards, right?
Correct.
Right. Four feet. So, so, so the thought was that a car going at, at a significant speed could hit one bollard, which wouldn't stop it. If it hit it dead-on, given the car's about four feet wide. So the thought was, if we put additional bollards between the ones that are on Lincoln Street, they would make the bollards two feet apart, so that no car could, could hit it and not contact two bollards. And two bollards will withstand any reasonably conceivable speed of a car. So that's the, that's the lamest explanation for it.
Yep.
So I really appreciate you agreeing to that.
Thank you for bringing up, but those were our thoughts.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes.
I just want, as I said, I just want to make sure, I think that's good, sound engineering, as we would always expect from our, our good.
Other comments, questions? Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to make a motion to approve an order and approve an exterior appearance plan and site plan for the installation of a brick wall and bollards at one oh two West Chicago, Chicago Avenue, commonly known as Fuller Service Center, comma, Hank.
Second.
We'll call vote.
Trustee Pashima?
Aye.
Trustee Braden?
Aye.
Trustee Siffler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Trustee Bean?
Aye.
Thanks for your cooperation.
Thank you, board. Have a good night.
Okay. That takes us, you said, nothing, right? Any, um, any trustee comments? No? I mean, I need staff comments. Kathleen, are you headed for the airport? Oh, she's out there? Okay. I think she's going to Spain tomorrow. Any staff reports?